Second 2025 St. Clair Shores City Council meeting to order. Abby, please call the roll.
Mayor Walby?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Karen?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick?
Present.
Councilmember Rubello?
Present.
Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
And Councilmember Vitale?
Here.
The quorum is present.
It's rise for the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is proclamations, and unfortunately, this was a kind of a, it's a worthy proclamation, but at the same time sad. On July 24th, Joe Claycomb passed away, and he had worked in the city and this community for almost 50, for more than 50 years, and so a proclamation is more than an order. And many times, proclamations are given to individuals who retire and go on their way and say, I've had enough, but Joe wasn't that person. He was going to stick around and work with his boots on, and, which he did. And so we got his family here, and we got Lillian Claycomb, his wife of 67 years. So, Lillian, why don't you come on up here, and I'm going to read this proclamation, stand right here, and let the family come up after, and then we'll have you say a few words, if you don't mind, if you're able to.
Few words.
Few words, which is sometimes tough for Lillian. Come on, Lillian, come on. It's all in good nature.
Oh, sure.
Proclamation to Joseph Claycomb, Jr., where's the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores deemed fitting and proper to publicly recognize the contributions of Joe Claycomb to our city. Joe, a U.S. Navy veteran, businessman, husband of 67 years to his wife, Lillian, father to Carolyn and Christine, father-in-law to Marco and Greg, and adored grandfather to Sophia, Dylan, and Alexis, lived in the city of St. Clair Shores for more than 50 years. Joe dedicated 39 years to the betterment of the city of St. Clair Shores through his unwavering service on the Tax Increment Finance Authority, TIFA, and 20 years serving on the Water Resources Development Advisory Board. Joe was appointed to TIFA in 1986, he was an original member, and the Water Resources Board in 2005, serving as chairman. He was a dedicated and insightful member of each board, actively participating in discussions, contributing valuable expertise, demonstrating exceptional leadership, guidance, and a commitment to excellence. Joe also served the St. Clair Shores community as Lakeview Public School Board Member in 1975, and president and member of the St. Clair Shores J.C.'s, Shoreward Kiwanis, Memorial Day Parade Committee, Adult Education Advisory Board, and Beautification Commission Volunteer to you. Joe's passion for community service and his dedication to enhancing the quality of life for St. Clair Shores residents are truly commendable. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of all our residents, wish to convey our sincere gratitude and appreciation for many years of outstanding service on the Tax Increment Finance Authority and the Water Resources Development Advisory Board, acknowledge his significant contributions to the well-being of our community, and commend his unwavering commitment to making St. Clair Shores a vibrant and enjoyable place to live. I give that to you on behalf of the city of St. Clair Shores for Joe Claycomb.
I accept it with pleasure.
Say a few words, Lil, if you can.
A few words.
Yep.
Thank you. I sincerely thank you for Joe. He loved every minute of everything he did. He believes if you live here, you contribute here, and that's the way our life was led. You know, for 67 years to be married to one another, Kip, that's a plus.
For sure.
But thank you, and thank all of you, that for the many years that he spent, he gave what he had, and he made it a better place.
He most certainly did. He was, as I said before, he understood what rich was, and rich is putting yourself back into community. It's not how much you have in your pocket, but it's having the friends and putting the work into the community and making St. Clair Shores better. Joe did that, and whenever you saw Joe, he always had a smile on his face. There was a, he was a happy man, and so.
His smile was his trademark.
Absolutely. The last time he was out working, he was, you were in front of the boat there, and he was watering the flowers.
Yeah.
I mean, he worked all the way to the end.
He did.
So, I'll give you that. I know your family wants to come up and.
Yes.
Get a picture, come on up, we'll get a picture. Someone will come out here, Steve's going to come take a picture.
Oh, Steve's going to come.
Come on up. You want me in it, Lil?
Okay.
Come on right over here. Why don't you get next to your mother, you get next to your mother. I don't know. Good.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Item three, Abby, is audience participation. Do we have any that are on the agenda?
Yes, we have four speakers. The first speaker is Tony Gergenti, a St. Clair Shores resident, speaking on agenda, item 7C.
Evening.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for having me. My name is Tony Gergeni, longtime St. Clair Shores resident, family lived here and everything. I apologize for taking up some of the time. I was actually going to, you know, speak about the pickleball and the tennis courts and taking away the tennis courts, but after hearing, you know, about Ms. Claycomb and the, you know, how important family is, you know, I was going to contradict, you know, other family members that were going to speak, I decided, you know, bickering over, it's not worth it, so I apologize for your time. Thank you.
Okay, no problem, it's okay.
The next speaker is Julie Piccolo, a St. Clair Shores resident, speaking on agenda, item 7C.
Good evening.
Hi, thank you guys for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Hello, my name is Julie Piccolo. A little bit about me, I am a working mother of two, beautiful children, and a wife to my hard-working husband, as well as a resident of St. Clair Shores for almost eight years. I'd like to express why keeping the tennis courts at Kite Monroe is so important. Tennis is a lifelong sport that people of all ages can enjoy, from kids just learning to play to grandparents staying active. My daughter plays, as well as my in-laws and cousins, and right now, there are no other public tennis courts in our city. By including tennis courts at Kite Monroe, you're giving families, students, and residents a healthy way to connect, exercise, and build community together. This is an opportunity to keep the park balanced and welcoming to everyone. My family and I love Kite Monroe, and we'd love to see the tennis courts included there. We hope you consider keeping at least one or two of the tennis courts, that would be greatly, greatly appreciated. Thank you all, and God bless.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lori Piccolo, a St. Clair Shores resident, speaking on agenda, item 7C.
Hi, I'm Lori Piccolo. I've been a St. Clair Shores citizen for 67 years, my whole life, and have enjoyed playing tennis, like, since I was 40, I started playing, and I play with my kids, I teach my grandkids, I play with our friends, so I really enjoy the tennis courts. Today, I was on my way to hit balls at Jefferson Middle School, because I couldn't go play all day today, because there's no tennis courts. So, I was going there when I found out about this meeting. I came home and changed and came here instead. The Jefferson School has tennis courts, and so does Lake Shore, or I mean, South Lake, but you cannot use those during school times, and you cannot use them when they're having their meets, and you can't use them when they have their practices, which is 6 o'clock at night. So, like I said, I give my grandkids tennis lessons there. I have enjoyed the Kite Monroe tennis courts, and somebody said that they were falling apart, but actually, they're better than the Jefferson Middle School, and I know that, because I play there all the time. I actually take a leaf blower and blow the leaves off the court to play, like, we go there all the time. So, we are a family that really enjoys it. We didn't know about this, we thought that they were going to put the two courts back up, and the pickleball, too, which a lot of people in my family enjoy pickleball, too, and so I understand it's really coming up, and all's I'm asking is for two city courts, just so that we could still play in the city and not have to go out of the city to play. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Rachel Hadad, St. Clair Shores resident, speaking on agenda, item seven.
Hello, hello. Okay, so my name is Rachel Hadad. I have lived in St. Clair Shores since I was born, and now I'm married, and we've lived in St. Clair Shores since we've been married, and then we just moved three streets away to St. Clair Shores. So, we've been here, and I've loved everything the city has to offer. I, as other here's today, are saddened and disappointed by the possibility of not having the courts at Kite Monroe. From a personal perspective, I have played tennis here since I can remember. My mom started playing when she was 40, and she soon thereafter had us start playing, and I've been playing since then, even while very, very pregnant during COVID, which was a sight to see. But also, from a civil perspective, it is disappointing, because the initial photo did show two tennis courts, and I am a person that, when I find out about something, if it's not going to happen, I like to make it happen, but if it is going to happen, then no concerns for me. I know that it's going to be a little bit harder now to raise funding or whatnot, but even without the funding, I don't think that accessibility to a sport should go to the highest bidder. Just because the pickleball community has more funding doesn't mean that they should be able to remove another sport from the city. There really is no reason that a city as large as St. Clair Shores shouldn't have the option for two public tennis courts. I think that the pickleballers would agree that if their courts were only allowed to be played on school property, it would be very hard for them to play. Most pickleballers, I play pickleball as well, they will play in the morning, they will play after school, which is when school is going on. I've been kicked off the court multiple times, because the kids have come out, not even for tennis, but the Jefferson Middle School uses those tennis courts as well for just gym class sometimes, and so it doesn't matter, I've gone at 10:30 or whatnot. For me, in life, there are many situations where someone has to lose and someone has to win, but this is what we call a win-win. There is ample room for two tennis courts, as well as six pickleball courts. A win for those who play pickleball, a win for those who play tennis, and a win for me, who plays both. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope, just four. Just the 7C, and if you're probably already in, but I'll just highlight, it's about a change order, it's not about any decision here, we're still getting bids. Okay, I just wanted to be clear, we had a. Okay, nope, 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 I just, it's not just you, the public, too. What occurred here is just a little bit of a problem underground that we have to now fix, that we weren't kind of aware of when it was the asphalt. Once we dug it up, we found the problem, so we have to do something about it before we take the next step. So, with that, we'll move on to. Item four is planning case. A is planning case to request rezoning for 22325 Statler, R.A. One Single Family Residential to P1 Parking. Brunch with me. Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you very much, how are you?
Terrific. We just need your name and all that.
My name is Robert Vickery, and I'm here with Joe Marikai to answer any questions that you may have for phase two of our process here. We've been to the planning commission, and we got the approval from the planning commission for rezoning and the site plan, so we're here for phase two, so we can move forward.
And the rezoning is the first house, first property west there. Brunch with me.
Yes, yes, it is.
Yes. Questions?
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Frederick.
Supported by Ms. Burgess. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. That's A to rezonate. Item four B is to request site plan approval for the new parking lot at 22325 Statler. Brunch with me, so you're busy over there.
Yes, he is.
So, you're just taking the home down, and then you're going to put a parking lot in there?
That's what he wants to do, and I know, we discussed when the removal of the home would be, because I know that's probably a question or a thought process, and the fall coming up, Mr. Marikai is thinking probably in the spring, maybe remove the home and start the process of the parking lots.
Mr. Karen?
Yes, so I guess with that, is the home winterized, or going to be winterized, if it's going to stay there throughout the winter?
I think it's been there throughout the winter before, I think it's.
But like, in terms of water, heat, you know, so that you're not going to get frozen pipes, and, okay, so that's, so the home condition is not, okay. So, the question regarding the parking lot, the traffic pattern for the addition, looks like there's, you'd be turning into it and only heading basically north, and then exiting, and the only exit would be out towards Jefferson, is that correct? Correct, yeah. So, if anyone exiting, they're exiting the existing curb cut, and they would take a left into the additional parking, and you're only going one way, right? Down that stretch, so do you have signage on the other side, so that people don't try to go the wrong way there? If they go through your parking lot to go to the other entrance, they're going to go in, and they're going to be going the wrong way, right?
When you answer, can you be by the mic, please?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll let Joe answer.
Yeah, it will be signage, yeah. There'll be signage there, so it's clear how people navigate through there, okay.
That makes more sense, too. We want to make sure, yeah, people know how to navigate through there.
Yeah, well, and, because it's, you're, you know, it's good, you're adding a lot of parking back there and trying to make the best use of the space. It can just be for a first timer going in there, maybe a little confusing, that's where signage would help. I'm sure, so, all right, thank you.
Mr. Rubello?
This is, it's a much-needed parking lot. You guys do a wonderful business. Joe, I'm going to blow some smoke at you a little bit. I know you care a lot about the city, you care a lot about Jefferson, you care a lot about the businesses there, so that I commend you, always known you as a hard-working guy. That business has taken off quite a bit. You'll probably do some people a favor, that sometimes I see the cars parked down the street, so you're going to get those off the street, and this is your next step. I know you've got big visions and stuff, so.
I think the planning commission meeting, a gentleman, a resident did speak up about that, and he was happy that those cars would be off the street.
Oh, yeah, completely, for sure.
I remember that question.
So, Joe, I'm happy for you, you're making some big plans down there, much-needed additional parking, that's for sure, and I know you do have the right, you have a no right turn right onto Statler, and that's going to stay like that, is that what, okay. So, with that, I will make a motion to approve planning case PPC 25009 SP, request for site plan approval for a parking lot at 23225 Statler with the following conditions: Parking lot plans are required to be submitted, and it is required to be paved and drained, concrete curves, parking blocks are required, variance from the zoning board of appeals to eliminate the 5-foot and 10-foot green belt along the west and north property lines. It will be required, the entire landscaped area along Statler shall be a minimum of 25 feet deep, or a variance will be required from the ZBI.
I'll support that.
Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Ms. Rusi.
I just wanted to add one thing, Mayor.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, this was, again, the planning commission recommended, it's also, that's all.
Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, first of all, you know, congratulations on, you know, what they call good trouble, because I see how popular that restaurant has taken off, and it's, I'm on Statler quite a bit, actually, and it's really nice to see kind of a nice, high-end restaurant like that there, with the piano player and everything. Very nice. Is there a plan for the 25-foot area and try to soften that up with some plantings or things like that? Well, what we just talked about.
The south end of the. She was showing, she was directing us to where the prop, where it is, he knows, yeah, they're going to do some landscaping there.
Something, there'll be some taller things there to kind of screen the parking lot, okay. Well, I'll gladly vote yes.
Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Ms. Rusi. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, congratulations, thank you, and then work will commence in the spring, is what you said.
That's what I understand.
All right.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good day, evening. Item five is the ordinance amendment to fix suppression systems at gas stations. City manager Dustin Lent.
Yep, and the audience is Fire Marshal Aaron Salori. He has also attached a proposal to myself that we passed out to all council back in July. This is a memorandum to change Chapter 16, Article 5, Section 16-126, Part D of 3, and Article 8, Section 16-225, Part D of the city codes. The proposed amendment would allow for the removal of outdated fixed pipe dry chemical fire suppressions at the fuel service stations, and provide for the removal is conducted through an approved permitting process. During the, when we sent this out, I do want to commend some of the council for giving some remarks and making some small edits, and I also want to thank Fire Marshal for looking at our ordinances and helping bring up some of this to date.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Just one suggestion for an additional edit, where we have, let's see, the recommended 16225D3A, where it says annual certification is required as noted above. Given that this is a specific ordinance, rather than giving a directional direction, like as noted above, I think it would be better to say pursuant to section 16225D2A, and cite the actual section that has the requirement for the annual certification for existing systems.
Perfect.
Yeah, directional's not good, we can, it's not preferable, we can cite a specific subsection, especially for enforceability purposes. Second thing is just in the affidavits about the, certification affidavits about the posting, we still are listing libraries as a posting place, which we know the library is now closed to the residents for renovation purposes, so just like we had to amend the police station, the fire station to be St. Lucy's due to construction, given the library's also under construction, closed for residents, we probably want to change that posting places somewhere else, because no one's going to the library to see that notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rubello?
Thank you, Mayor. So, all's we're doing is, we're going to be pulling this out of our code book now.
Correct, yeah, just to get us in line with the International Fire Code. I believe they pulled it out prior to 2015.
Yeah, no, this is, and I'm sure you're going to do some gas stations, you know, these are high-cost items here, but we're not skimping on the safety, because there's other ways. What do we have, like, fire suppression systems as far as fire extinguishers, what can they use in case there's issues and stuff at the fire pumps, or at the gas pumps?
When these systems were in place, we didn't have the, there's a tip, there's valves in them that when cars run into them.
Yeah.
It automatically shuts off now. We have extinguishers throughout the gas station, there's an automatic shut-off switch outside, as well as inside, that the tenant has to constantly monitor.
Okay, well, this sounds good, thanks for doing this. I'm going to make a motion to amend Chapter 16, Article 5, Section 16-126, Part parentheses, D3, Article 8, Section 16-225, Part D of the city's code of ordinances as proposed below.
Support.
And.
With my amendment?
With.
Suggestions by Councilwoman Rusi in there, yes.
Support.
Supported, yes. And Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, just one question, in the letter here, it does mention the environmental risk of the existing dry chemical. What will become of the existing dry chemical systems? Are they going to be discharged, or they're not going to be inspected anymore? Do we need to be concerned that, you know, five years from now, something rusts out or discharges, or?
So, to address that concern, if, they're allowed to keep these systems, if they have the systems in place, they must maintain them, so every, every six months, they have to get it checked by a service provider that services these, and if they're not, if they're out of date at the tanks, anything, they replace that. Otherwise, if they want to get removed, the system, they have to go through our permitting process and go through a proper company to get that removed, and then that company.
Okay, so there won't end up being any derelict 10-year-old systems 10 years from now that haven't been serviced or anything?
I'm guessing most of them are going to want to remove it.
Yeah, that would stand to reason, and then you'll still be looking to make sure they comply with those fire extinguishers within 75 feet, so that'll be still part of the inspection.
Right.
Okay, I'm satisfied.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for your hard work. Item six is fiscal year 2026 carryover request. Finance Director Treasurer, John Walters.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet tonight is, for your approval, a list of carryover requests from fiscal year 2425. These are projects that were started, delayed for whatever reason, still ongoing, that will be moving over, and costs will be incurred in fiscal 2526. So, these approvals are already budgeted for and approved in fiscal 25, there's just costs going to be incurred in 26, which will result in a budget amendment for our 26 budget.
Questions? Mr. Karen?
Thank you. You know, first, one number jumps out, the general fund, of us only needing 74, or roughly about $75,000 to carry over. I think that's the lowest number we've ever had, at a carryover amendment, so, and the reason that's important is that means the money that's being allocated for projects, it's getting used up in the correct fiscal year. It's like, you know, in the past, we've had things, a couple of years, like, just get carried over, carried over, and questions, well, it must not be that important if it's not being used in that budget year, so that is great to see. The bulk of these other ones are construction projects, which do span a couple of years. The only one I'd ask staff to follow up on afterward is the Jefferson and Sonic Pump Station. That was largely done prior to the end of the fiscal year, so I don't know whether we didn't get the last progress payment for that, and I know we're trying to submit for reimbursement, that's kind of why the revenue is outstanding on that as well. So, if we can get an explanation later on that one, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Support. Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Walters, thank you. Item seven is bids contrast purchase orders, request approval of MDOT cost share agreement to install EV chargers in Kite Monroe Park. Rob Spinazzola, Parks and Rec Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight representing Denise Pike, who is on vacation. We are asking you to approve the city's portion of the cost share agreement with MDOT to put in two EV chargers at Kite Monroe Park. We received funding from an 80/20 match grant funding program called NEVI, coordinated through MDOT. We are responsible for the 20% of that. Low bid was Dan's Excavating for $88,168.63, which is actually under the originally estimated cost. However, we are asking you to approve the full amount of $19,500 from the original estimate. If approved, we'll notify MDOT right away, get an estimated start date. Completion date is for spring 2026. One thing I do want to point out is I do believe the incorrect contractor's name is on the PO, so we will get that fixed and submitted the correct way.
So, this is for not only vehicles, for e-bikes, too?
Correct.
And I, because I don't, we don't, the one here, out here, is not e-bikes, right? You can't do e-bikes out here?
I'm not sure, I don't think so, I've never seen a bike out there, but I see plenty of cars.
So, this must be like the next technology here, and just to be able to do, you know, vehicles and bikes, so. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, nothing particular in this, except when you work with Denise to communicate back to MDOT, because I don't know if, it's really more Denise's question, but the chargers at Veterans, right, those are all installed late May, they're still not working, right? And they, and the piece of concrete they tore up is still not restored, so kind of use this as leverage for MDOT to finish their other job that's been outstanding over there? Because that, because it worked past the season. Because it worked past the season, right?
Yep.
In terms of that parking lot largely being used, so. So, that's one thing, and then also, and I believe that the ones at BRISE, they, there's a orange tarp over one area where they thought they were gonna go, and I think that ended up not being feasible, they didn't have power there, right?
Correct, there's, so these locations at the various facilities have changed a few times based on where we feel we can get the power the most cost-effective way. I don't, I haven't gotten a full indication on where the ones at BRISE are going yet, but you are correct, we had one location and.
So, is there still the MDOT plan? Because I think it's, it's gonna be Veterans, Kite, Blossom, and BRISE.
I'll have to check back in that with Denise and Mike. Because, yes, at one point, there was a plan to put them at all of those locations. Based on cost now, though, we haven't finalized anything further than these two.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, try to use this to get the other one wrapped up, so. And if they have any explanation why it's taking them so long on that too, it'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor. So, Rob, the, where, do we know where the power's coming from yet?
So, they.
Are we digging up the parking lot, I hope not?
No, so it's actually already been run. So, when we did the lighting, lighting project for Kite Monroe, we actually ran the conduit at the same time.
You know, I remember talking about that. I remember talking about that, I wasn't sure if we did it. So, that's, that's great news. And, and the fact that there is, we're gonna be talking some power over there, is there any other power that we need over there for anything? We should be looking at while?
Nothing right off the top of my head, but I think we should definitely, while, while we're over there, explore the possibility, for sure.
All right, that's awesome. Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Frederick.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Karen. Mr. Rubello.
I just wanted to add something, because I think this part is some of the most important part of these types of gadgets. Letting people know where these are, it's a big part of any of this new type of technology. And, what is our plans to let people know? Because these aren't only for people in St. Clair Shores, they're gonna be for people that are driving all over the place. I mean, are we getting on like, I just jotted a few things down. The, the locations are good, those are popular locations that we're picking?
Yeah, I mean, they're our highly-used facility, so that's why we've, we've chosen those locations.
Okay, because, you know, there's, there's types of applications and so forth on, on the internet, right? You got applications that will be on, people know where to find this. I'm just, I'm just saying, these are like good notes to take for any type of communication. Government websites, local government websites, even really, we have a bike shop here in St. Clair Shores, Tim's Bike Shop there in Jefferson. He should probably have some type of, on his website, where they can.
I'm, I'm sure we can work with communication to put a PSA together, put something out, and if Tim's wants to post it. I'm sure the company that has the chargers does probably have an app or a website that you can find these locations on.
Okay, because that, that's an important thing, is to let people know where that's at if this passes, so.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. This was bid out, was this bid out by the state or by us? This was by the state, right?
To be honest, I don't have the answer to that question.
Yes, that's why I figured, because we didn't have the usual bidding materials, so that looked like it was not bid out by our jurisdiction, it was bid out by the state. This is a state, very pro forma-looking state contract, I assume our city attorneys reviewed it and signs off?
Yes, yes, the contract and all of its subparts.
Okay, great. And are there any ongoing obligations with us accepting this funding? Do we have to keep these for a certain number of years? Who maintains them? I just, that kind of question, or is this just something, they're paying for it, and that's it?
My understanding is that they're paying for it, and they'll, they'll recoup the funds to keep them in working order. That's my understanding of it.
Okay, if you have a, I know this isn't yours, this is Denise's, so I'm not expecting you to have the answer, but there's any additional contractual obligations or anything beyond the very, like I said, pro forma-type construction-ish contracts we have in here? If we could get that set, I would appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vitale.
Just want to mention for the residents that the city's cost on this is $19,500 from the $90,000 that the state's picking up, it's an 80/20 match. On the chargers themselves, that's part of the state contract?
Correct.
So, any issues with that have to basically go to MDOT?
I'm sure that we'll have some, somebody that we're gonna communicate through, it'll get reported to us, and then we'll report it to MDOT.
Okay, all right.
Now, a quick comment too, I think the, the letting bikers know is for sure. Vehicles such as Tesla start to pick these up immediately, they, they know where the sites are, just, you know, these electric cars, they, they grab it, so it makes it easy for them. But, definitely the e-bike people don't have that ability and have that system in their cars to get that done, so that. Mr. Rubello.
Yeah, just one, one quick comment here. NEVI, the funding, the NEVI formula program, is that, is that in existence still? I just, because I thought at one point they took it away, they may have brought it back?
This is, this is from, and I don't have, I don't know the year off the top of my head, but this was funding that was from a couple, two, three years ago at least.
Which ran through MDOT.
Originally approved. I do not know if MDOT still has the program.
But the funding is there.
Okay.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen, to approve the cost share agreement with MDOT and the allocation of $19,500 for EV chargers at Kite Monroe Park. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero, thank you. 7B is request approve bid and purchase order for cart path replacement and overlays at the St. Clair Shores Golf Club.
Yeah, so, item two for us tonight is requesting approval for the rehabilitation of the cart paths at the St. Clair Shores Golf Club. We are bringing two options forward to you tonight. The first option is budgeted in the current budget. Second option is something we are bringing, kind of as a different creative way, we've used on other things in the past, to get this project completed now. I'm supposing to continue this project over the next several years. I understand if we choose not to go this route, but we feel this is a quick way to help improve our city facility and pay back the funds over the course of time. We've done this, as I said, with our golf carts, and I'm gonna let the golf team, Jeff Vassett and Matt Crippen, kind of take over from here.
Evening, Council. Jeff Vassett, Golf Course Superintendent. As Rob stated, this process has been going on now for, I think, believe close to 10 years when the original cart paths were being resurfaced. The last renovation was done back in fall of '22. And, our basically goal here is just to finish them all up and not have to go back two years from now, two years from now, and get them all done. So, we'd like to wrap them all up. This process, the, the current cart paths are crumbling, they're deteriorating, they can cause accidents for golfers, damage to the golf carts, damage to our maintenance equipment. A lot of them are buckling to the point where they're heaving in the middle. I don't know if you can, you can send me pictures you can show? So, these are some of the holes from option one. And, as you can see, right in the center point of some of those, we had to add stone around the outside of that, just so our equipment can go open. Golf carts, our brand-new golf carts are actually, the bottoms of them were scraping on the top of some of that, and it's heaving so high, so we had to add material around it, just to kind of make it a little bit safer for everything. Yeah, option five, hole five, I should say, is the same issues. This one's mostly gravel on that, it's actually deteriorated to a point we've had to add gravel to the cart path, it wasn't even lasting any longer. Yeah, the same buckling, just nothing to really hold anything. So, unfortunately, a lot of these are gonna have to get removed and replaced throughout the point where they can't put a cap over those, there's nothing, it's just not stable enough, like in. That's an original one, it's only a six-foot path, you can see the weeds growing out of it. Some of these, we were hoping that we would be able to get capped over, well, we did a ride around with best asphalt, and basically, anything that has any kind of crumbling, that nothing is stable enough for them to add anything on, it has to get removed. This is a, so this is actually one of the worst sections, but once you get past where that water is, it's actually a decent cart path, so that one on 16 right there can get overlaid beyond that point. These are some of the ones from the option two that we'd like to get done. Again, older cart paths, and actually, some of these are holding up decent for being as old as they are. I mean, I know it's bad, but there's no base under those, it's just ground. When they built those in the early 80s, they didn't have any kind of a concrete or fast-lined stone base or nothing.
Because originally, the, when the course was built in 75, there were cart paths, and they came in the 80s.
Correct, yeah. Same here, this one isn't too bad, this is one that would probably cap up to a certain point. And then our maintenance path leads up to that, going into the building, and our maintenance road, as the next one will show, is also falling apart. We get a lot of our heavy machinery goes through there, gas truck goes through there, so we're hoping to get that one redone, which would take a little more. I believe they put a four-inch base on that. Yeah, same thing, just, there's nothing left for these cart paths to hold anymore. Weed's growing in the middle of them, yeah. Last one.
Anything else?
The biggest thing, I mean, I'm more of the upfront at the golf course, where Jeff's on the maintenance, and I'm constantly getting residents, customers, non-residents that play there, asking about, you know, how do you have nine? It's kind of like what they tell me, it's like you paved half the road, another half you didn't do anything to. Why don't we get these cart paths done? That's what I hear, day in, day out. And, you know, I say we're doing our best, we're trying to raise funds, we're trying to do it. But, the biggest thing is, like Jeff said, a few of them are starting to become like safety hazards, where kind of they're crumbling on the side, and we have a pond, you know, nearby. Some of them are people, I think, just getting in and out of golf carts, because if we do have a cart path-only day, you know, they're getting out of there, and you can see some of that concrete, where I think someone's, you know, it's turned into somewhat of a safety, I think, issue with some of the older golfers, and younger too. But, you know, we have a lot of older seniors that play there, and it's kind of a alarming situation, so. The, I mean, the pitchers do, you know, the, I'm sorry, the holes that have been done are in great shape, so if you, I know a lot of you guys have been to the golf course, some of you guys have played there, some have been there for events, and, you know, if you drive around, it's pretty simple to tell, you know, as you're driving, you're on this smooth road, it's perfectly smooth, like going down a new highway, and then all of a sudden you hit another hole, and it's like, what the heck's going on here? So, you know, that's the biggest thing. And, I think, we, we've, I've been through kind of one and a half of the renovations, I would call it, and it's just a, the, the, the construction crew out there, to have them out there at one time would be great, get this all done in a, you know, I'm not sure of the exact timeframe, but I would say probably three weeks, roughly, I think it would take them to do that. Versus coming out, kind of disrupting the golf, we gotta have temporary holes, we got people working on a pass, then say two more years from now to come back, do it again, all over again. It kind of does a lot of, you know, they ruin some of the turf areas, you know, they it'd be nice to just do it at a one time, rather than doing this twice. And I don't know how long those paths would make it, if we, if we set another two years, I don't know what they would look like in two more years from now, so. That's kind of why we're looking for this option today, so.
And I would just add, what I think, as I do, I think everyone knows I play golf out there, but a point I think you don't, didn't point out is, people avoid the pass, so now they're driving, they're driving, they're driving on the golf course, right? They're constantly, because they don't, they, it's not smooth, so now we got, instead of having the cart paths, they're driving all over the golf cart. That's a little bit dramatic, all over the cart, but they're not gonna use, they're not using these paths, they're driving on there, so you're getting more ruts, you're getting this on the golf course, because they want to avoid that, and they should, because it's sometimes, it's bumpy, it's full of water, you get splat, it's terrible. So, I think that is a valid point, that I wasn't sure you, you made, but.
It's like driving down the road, you see a big pothole, you just, same thing.
Totally. So, questions, Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, Jeff, I think back in late May, you and I did a driving tour around and saw a lot of these bad areas, and, and I do think it's like, you know, we're, we're kind of at the finish line, we, I'm, well, we started replacing them about eight years ago?
Yeah, it was probably 2016.
Right, in that timeframe, so I think we're close to the finish line, might as well just go ahead and get it done. I like the idea of how this isn't just a contribution from the general fund, it is a loan with interest, golf course fund will pay back, so I do like that idea. So, what, I think you're gonna just go ahead and get it all done, and we've had, Best Asphalt did the last set out there, correct? And any issue with their work, workmanship since then?
No, I, I mean, when they were out in '22, I think we worked great together, we kept a lot of the material on the course.
And all those passes have held up, right?
All the passes have held up great.
No cracking or anything like that?
Nope.
So, that's good. All right, thank you.
Ms. Burgess.
Well, I was gonna say a couple of the things that John said, so I won't repeat that, but I, I think that option two is the way to go. It means protecting our investment, giving residents and our visitors a first-class experience, and avoids the patchwork going on and the driving on the grass, and it's only delaying the inevitable, so I do believe option two is gonna be a great option.
Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor. So, you know, we have a premier golf course facility, it's one of the best municipal golf courses in the state, I keep hearing this from other people who come here and play. So, I think we need to add to that experience, and the fact that it could wreck equipment and maybe shorten the length of our, you know, the life of our golf carts. To me, this is, this is needed immediately, and I like the fact that we're gonna do it at one time, we don't disrupt golf forever. And for me, it's gonna help my errant shots that hit the cart path and get, I get a lot more distance out of it, so, the sooner the better, especially on the long holes, so. I, I would move to approve the option two.
Moved by, before. Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen. Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. You know, you guys gave a nice presentation, you really, I think, justified why going with option two made sense operationally, and also showing the pictures of the existing conditions and, you know, all the issues those pose, you know? I mean, it's a little frustrating, though, when you're a decision-maker, and it's, we just approved this budget, it's new as of July 1st, '25, '26 fiscal year, it's September 2nd, it's like, well, we budgeted this, but we're asking for a whole lot more money, right? And it's a little frustrating from a decision-maker's perspective, because it's like, if you guys knew the cart, the cart path looked like this, and we're getting those complaints, we're experiencing those issues, and you would have had some, you know, much more efficiency operationally, having them all done. I would have liked to have contemplated this at budget time, rather than being hit all of a sudden with, well, we have this budget, but we need a whole lot more. I'd say I will vote for this, because I do think this is necessary at this time, and I think, like I say, you made a good pitch for why this made sense, doing this now versus doing it piecemeal over the years, especially operationally. But, it's just, it's a little frustrating, and I will say, I do appreciate the funding mechanism being not just a gift from the general fund, but the loan perspective too, with interest, which is nice, so. I do appreciate that being part of the proposal versus just us filling in the gap with general fund money, period. So, I'll be voting for this, but again, I wish there's a little bit more maybe transparency or pre-planning at budget time, given that this budget's not that old, and those cart, those cart paths were like that for quite some time, and I think you guys have known that this probably was a pretty compelling need.
That's fair.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vitale.
Yeah, if I were a betting man, I'd say it looks like you're gonna get new cart paths before the vote here. What would be the plan going forward in terms of, once we've got all that new asphalt for seal coat maintenance? How will we conduct that?
I don't think there's any plan for that that we know of, I don't, I can talk to best and see what they recommend that we do, but I've never actually put anything down on a, on a path after.
I can see why you wouldn't, because it would be completely wasted, but we're gonna have all new paths out there, I think we should have, get on a schedule for seal coating so that we get the most out of them.
I get you, I understand, it makes sense, yeah, we can look into it, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah?
So, in defense of the golf staff, the golf course is now outside of the general fund, so to be able to utilize or use any of the general fund money was outside of their privy, so they understood that now this is only the second year of truly being outside of the general fund, they've tried to build up that fund balance, they haven't got that fund balance built up yet, so that's why in the budget, it was, and this is actually the second year, and they didn't know how this year's gonna go, because we're really dependent upon weather. So, if the weather would have been extremely bad in the spring, they would have had less money. they would have had less money. So if you see in the budget, actually, it was a hundred and fifty thousand. But at the budget time, we also did mention that if they do well, then we might see if we could do more cart paths, thinking that it was only going to be five or six.
Well, again, that's not all cart paths. That's additional. I was thinking when that was stated, it might be an additional cart path. So I'm just saying, a little bit more. And yes, they are outside the fund, but they're still getting this done within the fusion of some general fund money through a loan. So it's something that we need to look at these things holistically. So it's not a knock on those guys necessarily. It's just something I think administration as a whole needs to be aware of. As a decision-maker, it looks pretty sloppy of us having to address this just a few months later, like this was unforeseen when this was foreseen.
Mr. Vitale, I'm sorry.
Just to follow up on, actually, I should have said this, but when, when you do work with Best and maybe AEW to develop a maintenance seal coat plan, could you make sure that we get a copy of that, just so we'll know, you know, maybe that we're looking at a cost every five years, or ten years, or whatever they end up recommending?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bello.
You guys are doing a great job over there, and it's looking better and better. And, you know, these types of things pop up, and, you know, you hate to just leave it eighty percent finished and stuff. So I'm a fan of just finishing these things, you know, while the iron's hot. And the payback to the general fund is going to be twenty-twenty-seven through twenty-thirty-one? Is that the time span?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're in a great spot to be able to do something like that.
Which is only, you know, about three hundred and twenty-nine, not the whole, not the whole entire one. So there, so, you know, on average, it'll be somewhere in that, you know, hundred and ten thousand dollar cost every other year to try. So that'll, that gives them two years to build that capital back up, and then, and then pay it, pay it down. So that's how they figured it in.
Yeah, we can't have people walking around on it, on those sections like that. I'm surprised nobody's gone down before. They, who knows, they may have. But that's not a good thing. It's not a good look. So, got to be part of being able to get this finished off for you.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen, to award the cart path rehabilitation project to Best Asphalt, approve the purchase order for six hundred and six thousand, five seventy-three fifty. And then with, which is option two, which is the last five holes are in that, that's three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two thirteen fifty to be paid over twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-one. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. And then that starts in October, right? Is that?
It sounds like they're looking for a late September, early October, in about a six to eight week.
Yep. And, and, you know, we very well got, maybe very good pricing from Best. I mean, Best is, just as we all know, Best is doing the Civic Arena. They're actually won the bid over at, for the, the whole tennis court, pickleball, their Kite Monroe.
Nothing was bid out for that.
Oh, yeah, but you're correct. Bid out that for Civic, and then this was bid, and then they were doing that work. So I mean, they're quite a bit in the city here in this fall. So thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven C, is request approval of the Kite Monroe Asphalt Courts change order.
Hello again.
So tell us what would happen here.
So, during the removal of the asphalt, it was discovered that the base under the asphalt was not sufficient enough for us to lay new asphalt on top. If we proceeded, then the asphalt would fail in a much quicker fashion. So the change order is to request to allow Best Asphalt to supply the limestone base and lay it in tamper it. Best suggested using a limestone base crush as opposed to crush concrete, as we've used prior. Benefits to using that limestone base include low to no rust spots, which can show through with a crushed concrete, better drainage, and long-term durability. This can help lead to lower maintenance costs over time. Nice for me to learn this as we move forward and do some more projects like this stuff. And then I'll answer any questions.
Mr. Vitale.
I know that what we're looking for tonight doesn't really affect.
Your mic fell down.
Sorry. What we're voting on right now doesn't really affect what ends up being on top of all that new asphalt. But obviously, we had a very impassioned plea tonight regarding keeping tennis courts. I'll just go on record and say that I do think the city should maintain at least one, maybe there's a case for two of these tennis courts. I don't want to have to leave the residents that play the sport at the mercy of the school districts, because, frankly, there's just going to be problems there. Just kind of putting that out there on the record.
Sure. And I also want to make clear, no, no determination's been made by anybody. Obviously, this has got to come back in front of you guys, once we make those decisions. So I also want the public to know, despite what people might think, there has been no final decisions made on what is going to be put back out there.
When might that decision be made?
We're getting bids in there. I don't know if it comes to the next meeting, or the first meeting in October. It's one of those.
So we're bidding it both ways with?
Oh, yeah, for the fencing, absolutely.
Fencing?
Yep, we added in tennis fencing to be safe.
I thought I remembered that, so.
Yes, yep.
But I just wanted to make sure those residents who came out and spoke tonight, which, which by the way, was a great use of the two minutes before council decisions, even though we're not deciding it tonight. It's just great to get that input from the public, because frankly, I wasn't aware there was this much passion until I started getting the emails and saw people show up at the podium. So, it's good to see.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Bello.
Okay, Rob. I talked with you a little bit earlier today, and I thought that the best bet at this point would have been Clancy to do this in that, in that best. So, but you sort of clued me in a little bit, because I was comparing, I was comparing apples to oranges. Because if you could sort of jump in a little bit here for me, they were going with the limestone.
So best, best recommendation is to use a crushed limestone. So it's still labeled similar to what a crushed concrete would be. It's just has finer, let's call it particles, finer, it's a finer mix that allows it to compact easier. This is what they suggest using on all of their court playing surfaces. And it's the same mix that we're actually, and I verified this morning, because Councilman Karen had the same question, same mix we're using as the base underneath our cart paths.
Which we've had a lot of success with. So, we're pleased with that.
So if you were, if, if Best was to actually put a bid in for the crushed concrete, their crushed concrete, it would be less than, or more than?
That I, that I, I don't know, because we didn't ask. This is just what they said we should go with. I did a little research myself, verified that this was the right type of material. And based on that suggestion, and the lower price from what Clancy's gave us, it made the most sense for us to move forward.
Mr. Lent.
Yeah, and I know that, so, just to clear up some stuff here as well, when we ended up finding out we had no foundation, obviously, Rob and Chris got on the horn, letting me know. And one of the biggest things, when you have a purchase this high, we wanted to make sure, okay, hey, is the contractor giving us a very, very high ungodly price? So that's why we actually reached out to Clancy's, was just to get another competitive price. It was an individual that we already do work with in the city. We have a contract with for twenty-one double A. So we reached out just to see and be able to compare. And that's when Clancy's came by and said, okay, hey, here's what your price is. So, if you wonder why, hey, why are we using Best, and then why are we getting Clancy's involved? It was just before we come back to council and asked for this change order, are we getting a good price? Even though this was, because as Councilman McCandless said, this wasn't bid out. We use unit prices per what we did for the parking lot. We wanted to make sure that we were getting a good price on this, and we were able to verify that with checking with Clancy's. And as you mentioned as well, what Clancy's proposing was a lower quality. Best said that they would do the twenty-one double A. They didn't recommend it. They didn't want to do it. And the last thing we want is another bribe situation of where the foundation isn't holding up, the cart paths are breaking. And then Best say, well, you told me that you wanted to go cheaper and use the twenty-one double A. So we're taking that word, knowing that they were cheaper for a premier product than what Clancy's was giving us. That's why we've come back. That helps clarify a little bit.
Yeah, because I just, you know, Clancy has done work for us, and is a pretty local guy. I mean, he's just up over the expressway there. Okay, some of the questions I wanted to just get verified.
Problem. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, it's pretty much probably that we were, right, Friday? I think we were talking all about this, and I think we were both doing AI searches online, asking for the comparison between crushed limestone and crushed concrete. Why would you use one or the other? And actually, it was just, typically limestone is more expensive.
Correct.
And that. So that's not the case here. That's, because my question was, we're using crushed concrete in all these other projects. Or at least that's what was being spacked out. But, in this case, the limestone's cheaper, so, so good to go with that. And it, and kind of is a hindsight thing, because, you know, when the mayor, he had first called me to tell me about this, you know, that, well, the asphalt got pulled up. Well, it couldn't get re-ground and reused because there's fabric in it. Well, same thing we ran into over at Briise. That vintage of asphalt did that, and didn't have an underlayment. So, I guess it would have been nice if they thought of that beforehand, but I get why it got missed. But then also, I went over and I looked at the basketball courts, probably put in about the same vintage at the time. And there's a whole section that is broken away from that, and it's obvious there's no material underneath of the dirt and that. And it's just a thick piece of asphalt. So, I, I think it's just on some of these in the future, you know, just like, as we're looking to do the Briise Park pass again, you know, about how they actually did go out, and they, you know, Fishback actually did do boring samples out there. So we actually have a better idea of what's the underground like, so they can take that as part of their design. And it sounds like here, maybe just some assumptions were made.
For sure.
And just didn't work out. So, that's why we got the change.
That's why I said it's nice for me to kind of learn this, too. Because as we move forward, and we have these other things, we'll know better.
Well, it got into of, as one part, one path is failing over at Briise Park, but the Blossom East path is fine, golf course path is fine, where all the differences are going on, right, between different asphalt. So, no, I think this is a better solution to get a base in there. I think all the other engineering firms would agree with that. So, so we just have to deal with the change order. Thank you.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. Yes, this is a change order to a contract I did not vote for procedurally, as stated. This wasn't, we only had a quote back in July from Best. We didn't go out to bid. So, given that this is just an extension of that contract, I did vote against, for procedural issues. I'll be voting against you also for, just as it's, it's an extension of the contract. That said, if I can kick things out procedurally, tend not to get into the substance. I will address the substance. I'm not against the project. I'm very grateful for Shorewood Quanis for their efforts in helping us fund this and make this happen. And I'm not in disbelief whatsoever that this is necessary work that needs to be done for this project. It's just procedurally. And further, go into the substance, just to put my two cents in on the tennis, retaining a couple tennis courts. I have been in favor of retaining a couple of tennis courts. I think having a diversity of facilities and off, you know, recreational offerings in the city just makes your city stronger. I know people utilize them. I always see, you know, for example, during the summer, when people have more ability to access the South Lake tennis courts are, we see people playing on that. They have a ton of tennis courts, and a lot of times, when I go by, everyone's being filled. And I know that access is then reduced during the school year, if other things are going on at the school. You know, I think if we don't see necessarily people utilizing these test courts now, maybe it's because they need some updating and some work. And I think once we make them nice again, we'll probably see. I mean, I know, I've seen an outlay of passion in my inbox the past couple of days from people reaching out who I've never heard from before, you know, on any other city issue, but feeling strongly that we should retain some tennis courts so that they can continue to practice their sport, and maybe get other people interested, too. So again, I think diversity in offerings is beneficial to the city versus changing them all into pickleball courts. And I believe that, and I, that would be my two cents as we go forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vitale.
Alls I'm going to add is that, you know, I could have saved you guys some AI electricity. Because the issue is, if you order crushed concrete, and you really, all you got was crushed concrete, that'd be great. But it never works that way, because I've used both. And you're getting chunks of old asphalt. You're getting chunks of rebar that are sometimes in there. You know, anything you can think that's ever been in a parking lot, you may find, I've even seen chunks of wood and things like that. So it's, if I have to take a lot of volume up, I'll put down a base, a crushed concrete, sometimes it's cheaper. But I always end up topping it with limestone. And it does pack in tighter.
The gentleman from Best, when I did talk to him, he did mention, sometimes you'll find rebar and other items in that crushed concrete.
It's never just concrete.
Right. Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor. So, first was the soft spot. Do we know exactly why it was a soft spot?
I don't.
Because I worry that it's water, maybe, or something.
Yeah, I mean, it could have just been a soft area where it was draining off in that area, and it became unstable over time.
When they did it, when they did. Oh, yeah, tree stump. Could have been. All tree stump, for sure. I think this is, this is a great way to do it. It's a smart way to do it for us, long-term. I, too, would be for at least, at least one tennis court there. And I would hope that, Rob, I know in our discussions, there might be other places around town where we could put another tennis court, possibly. I did talk to Rachel today, and did email back and forth with numerous of those folks. And by the way, Rachel had called me before about volleyball. And, and, yeah, I know, she said she talked to you, too. So that's great, Linda. And I think, I think we need to, we need to look at just having tennis in the inventory for everything that we do here. Because we do everything. And to be missing tennis.
Pretty much.
And it's mostly on you. Sorry about that, but.
No, it's fine. That's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah. But ever, ever since we lost the tennis house, which by the way, had a lot of pickleball in it, too, to the storage facility, that, that has put a little bit of a hit. So, I would make a motion to approve the change order in the amount of forty-two nine thirty, to Best Asphalt, approve the purchase order.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen. Mr. Lent?
So, before we made, I know you already made the motion, but I do want to kind of maybe bring something up for councils, because it does sound like, obviously, we have the individuals here with the tennis courts. We currently have how the, it was kind of established with the two tennis courts and the pickleball. I know some people here have just mentioned, you know, maybe one tennis court. We're still evaluating that. We're still looking at it. But one of the recommendations when the tennis courts are put in there, there is recommendations for what I would say competitive pickleball and competitive tennis, where they have X amount of space and distance. That area there was about five feet too short to be able to put back the way we had it with the six pickleball and the two tennis, or any way we look at it. What I would ask, to be able to give some leeway to recreation and the contractor when we're putting this in, adding a little bit of a contingency. So if we could actually add five feet in either direction. We are kind of relegated to the far south side, where there's kind of a ditch, drainage dish there, so we wouldn't be able to really push it that way. We do have the cart, not cart path, a walking path that goes this way, but it does, there's about three to four feet we could go. So it would just give a little bit of flexibility, so we don't have to come back here again, once we start getting the other prices in, to be able to kind of ask our engineer to design that. So.
So you, so you're thinking like, the maker of the motion would, instead of forty-two thousand, go up to like fifty thousand?
I think that would.
Up to fifty thousand?
Fifty, I mean, I would recommend at least, yeah, fifty to fifty-five, if you could.
Up to fifty-five thousand?
And, and then, we will, we'll let council know when we have, obviously, the designs and the maps, and kind of the exact layout with the pricing we have. That way, council will have, be able to have the input to be able to say, okay, hey, here's what we're looking at. But I don't want to make the concrete too small, where we're not actually having competitive.
No, that, that, that's, that's good forethought, for sure. I noticed that today, when I was over there, it's, it's pretty much dug out already. Is that?
It's completely dug out, correct.
Is it, is the five feet already included in that dug out?
It is not.
Okay, so we'd have to do a little bit more.
Yes.
Okay. All right, yeah, I would change my motion to up to fifty-five thousand.
So I get clarification, then?
Okay, Mr. Karen?
So, the fifty-five thousand, or the needed addition, is that just for the limestone base, or is that inclusive of the asphalt top?
That would be inclusive of the entire surface and asphalt top.
Fifty-five thousand would be all of that?
Yes, all of that.
Okay, yep. All right, thank you.
I would support that change. Thank you. So, moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen, of course, to accept the bid for forty-two thousand, nine thirty, but to approve up to fifty-five thousand dollars for administration to evaluate, adding the additional piece, whether it's three, four feet, five feet, to make the area a little longer in order to have the competitive courts that are specifically required. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Six to one, it passes. Thank you. Item eight is consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Updates and files from prior meetings. Mr. Lent, item nine.
Mr. Karen mentioned the new guard rail, and asks if we are required to have reflectors on that. The DPW director confirmed with the installer that there's on that. The DPW director confirmed with the installer that there's no requirements to install reflectors. The area is currently equipped with street lights and yellow arrow signs above the guard rail, which provide nighttime visibility to worn drivers. These measures meet the minimum standards. However, additional reflectors could be installed at council's direction.
On that? Yes, Mr. Karen.
Does anyone object with actual reflectors being installed?
No.
To go above the minimum?
Yeah, I think it's wise.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think we need a motion on that.
And then we had two resident comments. Sheila Jones, St. Clair Shores resident spoke on Gross Point Woods Lakefront Park and asked if city could call Gross Point Woods to allow St. Clair Shores residents' access. So.
Good luck.
As council know, the property that became the park was sold to the city of Gross Point Woods by Eleanor Ford in nineteen forty-eight for the purposes of the city-owned park. The land is considered private property, though it is owned by a public entity and Gross Point Woods pays taxes to St. Clair Shores who provides police, fire, and emergency services. According to Gross Point Woods, park usage is limited to residents and their guests by permit only, similar to that of the St. Clair Shores water, lakefront parks. We also had another resident, Tom Peterson, St. Clair Shores resident, spoke when cars speeding on Maxine Street and asked for speed bumps. He also mentioned code enforcement complaints are being closed before they're being taken care of. The city is not considering the installation of speed bumps on residential street at this time. However, Chief Allen has added Maxine Street to the list for speed study and increased enforcement. Additionally, I spoke with the resident immediately following the August eighteenth meeting to review his code enforcement process and we had that conversation.
Thank you. Item ten is comments by individual council persons. Ms. Burgess.
Alrighty, I just have a couple tonight. Oh, microphone. Oops, sorry. Thank you. Bring up my, the first one I wanted to bring up was Harvest Fest is coming up at St. Isaac Joes. And I gave you all a little postcard here. It is September twentieth from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM. There's going to be a priest and sisters softball game. We got a vendor show, which is brand new for the Harvest Fest. So we're going to have a bunch of vendors there. I think there's sixteen vendors that are going to be there. So that'll be awesome. There's going to be kid games. We're going to have of course, food and drink and the beer tent. We have Gross Point Zoology exotic animal shows that are going to be there. So that'll be very exciting. We're going to have our Polish folk dancers, a cornhole tournament, and Main Street Drive is going to be the main singers, which is one of my favorite bands that we have downtown social districts and at our Music in the Park. We're also going to have a brew garden tasting and of course, our famous raffles. So make your plans for September twentieth. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was the Cool City Shortober Feast, a little bit different than ours, Shortober Fest, is going to be starting September twentieth to October fifth. And that is going to support all of our bars and restaurants in the St. Clair Shores area. There's about thirty-two, is that correct, Rob? Thirty-two participants. And so the goal is that everybody will go to these restaurants during that timeframe. There'll be kind of make, most of them are going to probably do some sort of Oktoberfest theme. You get to scan your phone that you went to the restaurant and then you're going to be entered into a drawing and that drawing is going to be for some major gift cards from these different restaurants. So first prize applies, we haven't really come up with an exact amount, but something like, you know, three, four hundred dollars worth of gift cards, first prize, second prize, third prize. So it's going to be a lot of fun and it's going to be a lot of good times to be able to go out and support our St. Clair Shores restaurants and bars. And this is all going to be leading up to hopefully next year. We're going to have a big Oktoberfest feast. And so it'll be a good time. So make sure that you stay tuned and go onto our Cool City website, which is sort of brand new. It's sescoolcity.com or check out our Facebook. Just look up Cool City on Facebook, St. Clair Shores Cool City, and you can find out all the details. And then social district is Saturday. I'm really looking forward to it. I'm actually going to be having some flyers. I'm going to be handing them out about the Shortober Feast. But also no more music in the park. So make sure you come out and enjoy our social district this Saturday.
Next Saturday, a week from Saturday.
Two Saturdays from now.
Sorry, two Saturdays from now. Yes.
The thirteenth.
Mr. Rebello.
Yeah, I was piggybacking a little bit on what Linda just said. Say goodbye to the, the Chamber Music Concert Series, which was incredible at, at the, at Wabi Park there. I mean, what great Monday nights. Goodbye to music on the lake. Fantastic music series coming to an end there in St. Clair Shores. So I thank everyone who was involved putting that together. Rob Spina's all the back there. Incredible for music on the lake. He did a wonderful, wonderful job keeping things, you know, all in line. So thanks for entertaining the, the people there. I just want to say one thing with the, the Harvest Fest St. Clair Shores, September twentieth, as Linda was talking about, the Gross Point Zoology is sponsored by Z's Pub. So we can't, what's that? Oh, I thought you said somebody. Z's Pub. So we, again, this is something to thank the, the sponsors that helped us put on these tremendous events. And I wanted to bring up one other thing with our, our pier in St. Clair Shores. I'm still looking for more lights out there. I don't think we have enough lights. They may say we have enough lights, but it's hard to see the pier coming in at night. And sometimes it just blends into the shoreline of St. Clair Shores. And I would also like to see, I've talked about this before, some more life rings around for people. You just never know when something bad can happen. So Shorewood Kuanis, I mean, it should be a city holiday. Incredible car cruise. One of the most enjoyable things. All the parties, all the people having a one darn good time. So it's good to be in St. Clair Shores.
Thank you. Ms. Rusi.
Hey, thank you. First, I'll echo Councilman Rebello's comments about the Shorewood Kuanis. It was another fantastic Harper cruise. So thank you to all the sponsors and people who just lined the roads to watch the, the cars drive by, the, all the parties going on. It was a lot of fun. It, the neat thing about this one is I don't think a lot of people realize is it's the only a hundred percent charity-driven car cruise in the state. So it's not only a lot of fun, but it's raising a lot of money for some great causes around the city, a lot of which help children. So it was great to see people who not only came out, had a good time, but also were buying the T-shirts, wearing the T-shirts, sponsoring, you know, having the hosted parties, everything like that, because it all goes for a really good cause. I was helping to do some fundraising with the Kuanis and just a special shout out to Mike Boyle, who was working the entire time hustling. He was like going in the streets, like into the street to get money in buckets and sell the T-shirts. We sold all our T-shirts and then we got more T-shirts dropped off and we sold all those too. We sold all our placards. We sold all our signs. We walked away with, I think, everything gone from that tent and just buckets of donations from people who just wanted to help out. So it's fun being on that side of things and knowing what the money goes toward. And thanks to all the people who are making that happen. It's a really, it's something Shorewood Kuanis should be really proud of and the state should be really proud too. And the participants, you know, it's a big event and I never really hear of any issues afterwards. And it's always wraps up around nine and you go out and it's like a car cruise never really happened because things look really nice and it cleans up really nice. So thanks to the Shorewood Kuanis. And finally, I just want to give a shout out to the Stand Out Adaptive Adult Organization for another successful summer program. Meanwhile, I was at the Harper Cruise, I bumped into a participant in the program who just was telling me how much it means to him and how great it is. And he watches the council meetings too. So he asked if I could give a shout out. So I will give a shout out to the Stand Out Adaptive Adult Organization. Thank you to the sponsors, the volunteers, the participants for putting this all together, making it happen, and especially co-presidents Kayla and Rachel, who are working to make the program even bigger and better every single time. So shout out to the Stand Out Adaptive Adult Organization. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll continue on the Harper Cruise in Shorewood. You know, this year volunteering with Kuanis, I know we staked out locations on Monday night. And then I was on the crew to take everything down after the, take all the tents and everything down. And hopefully, Brown, you got them all back in good condition?
Well.
We tried.
Mostly.
We tried.
Mostly.
But to be part of that crew and just kind of like see what happens afterward. And the amazing thing was, I knew the police did a thing of like shutting down the crews at nine. Never knew what that meant until I was trying to drive from nine mile to get to the tent to take down at eleven mile and run into a roadblock at ten mile that the police set up to basically get everyone off of Harper and just then the end the cruise. So I think that takes a lot of work, a lot of effort and coordination to kind of just get everything ramped down.
Did they let you through?
No, they're not letting me through. They, they did their job. They did their job very efficiently in terms of shutting down the cruise. So, but, but also for those that are still looking for T-shirts, they are available for sale. We still have them at Village Market and we also have them at First State Bank at nine and a half mile on Harper as well. So there are still some shirts available if you did not get them the day of the cruise. But again, thank you Shorewood Kuanis for all the hard work that goes into that one, you know, it is one big party for one end of the city that other that whole day. So that is great to see. And next, Mac, could you bring up a couple of the things? First off, in the middle of prepping for the Harper Cruise, we did have a historical marker dedication over at Bomarito's and, and tell you, the commission was just blown away by not only all the people at the event, but also all the coverage that got. And basically to just how a historical marker can really give that much positive press for a business in our city. So thanks for the historical commission for putting that together. A little, little backstory on this one. Obviously, we, we meant to do the dedication back in May due to some health issues. We had to delay it. And a big shout out to Kathy Campbell, who's on our commission, because she was the one trying to get it, the dedication rescheduled. And she would go in, talk to one sister. They're like, oh yeah, yeah, we want to do, want to do, you know, trying to get a date. And then she'd go back and follow up while she talked to another sister. While the other sister wasn't so hot on doing a big party and that. So she'd go back a third time. Fortunately, she got the other sister. Yeah, went back to the first one and we had this big event over there. So, but congratulations to Bomarito's for a fantastic event to recognize their a hundred years in business, sixty-one years here in St. Clair Shores. And their plaque is now out in front of their building right by St. Joan of Arc. So thank you for everyone that came, everyone from council. Historical commission was very appreciative. Everyone showed up that day. And next, this is something I've been playing around with. This is the tree map of I'm trying to create for the Arboretum in a new piece of software I have. And what I started to do was as I marked the tree, was also color coding it, basically trying to pinpoint when they were planted. And the blue marks up there were largely the original trees going back to probably when the park was first created or first plotted by the city. So they can go back to the seventies, but anything prior to nineteen ninety-seven. There's an orange set there towards the back. That was the beautification planning back in nineteen ninety-seven as a big Arbor Day event that they did at that time. The pink were ones that DPW had put in over the next twelve or so years with all the hard work they did. And then the green is basically what we've been planning since twenty twenty-two to basically create this arboretum and have it certified. And what I was amazed at after I did it, it's like looking at the green of like just in the last few years of how many additional trees have we planted in that park and just kind of creating a, a very unique thing that is really just St. Clair Shores. Nobody else has a certified arboretum. Nobody else has one park where you can see all these variety of trees that generations are going to be able to enjoy here. So also having to do this because I need to get a final list of what all these trees are, where they're at, and what type they are. So fortunately, the software let me export it out once I get them all tagged. So, but I just thought that was like, just as I did it and got this view of it, I was like, that looked pretty impressive. So just wanted to share that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So I'm hoping we're going to get a, a marker out there for all those trees, right? For the different trees?
You can go onto the website. There, there's a kiosk at the front.
Right.
Code that goes to the city website.
Okay.
That has the tree guide of where all the trees are, what they are, and also a description of the species. All that's already out there.
Excellent. And at the Bomarito unveiling, which had been there a while, as you, as you mentioned, because I know it's been cemented in there for some time, Monsignor Mike was there and we've become, you know, friends for, you know, over the years. And I went up to him during the, immediately following the ceremony. And I said, Monsignor, you know when those people are leaving church right at the end of Mass, but Mass not quite over, you know, they're going to Bomarito's to pull the, pull the tab so they get their number, right? So, and he says, well, I've been trying to talk them into closing on Sunday, and I think they are closed on Sunday. So anyway, stay in church till the end, right? All right. Get your calendars out. First off, Bike Fest, September twentieth, and that's early, ten AM to two PM. It's going to be at Kite Monroe. It's an eighteen dollar registration and that gets you a ten-mile ride, lunch, and a T-shirt for each paid rider. Children under twelve ride free and receive lunch must be accompanied by an adult. You can get additional T-shirts there for twelve bucks. And all the proceeds are, are going to benefit St. Clair Shores Cops for Kids. So another great bring back and do it again, because I don't think we did it last year. So, and each adult must complete a form. So also mark your calendar. Hockey opening day. I can't believe it's already here again. October fifth, Sunday, October fifth. Mark your calendar. Art fair, art fair, September thirteenth and fourteenth at Veterans Memorial, ten to five. And then you can head over to the social district. And then the, just wanted to mention too, the car cruise was awesome. A lot of the, a lot of people you get to see only that day, it seems like. And Linda, you had an awesome party. Huge. Was, it was, it was perfect. You had, you had.
The Orbison's.
I know. You had the Orbison's and just a great congregation of people over there. So Linda, nice job. And, and all the other parties too. I know Al Melfi had a really big party with Rocksteady playing and just, just really good. And then before I talk a little bit about the library, I just wanted to say thanks to everybody up here and Mayor. I know I didn't make the last meeting, a little bit, you know, a little bit messed up from my mom passing, but I appreciated all the kind words that you said. The moment of silence, you said it about my whole family and that, that is very much appreciated, Mayor. Thank you very much. So library, the library's closed, which is sad, but not really sad because it's still kind of open. And I just wanted to mention, we still have online resources provided by the library with Libby, tutor.com, Hoopla, Transparent, and numerous other things. You'll be able to actually check out books, but there's, there's a process for that. If you go on the website, it explains it all. And we're excited that we're finally getting to the, how long, Candace, we've been working on this for how long? Seems like three years, right?
Four years, yeah.
Yeah. And we've had some good meetings and excited to get that started. So Mayor, that's all I have. Thanks again.
Thank you. Mr. Vitale?
Yeah. I'll mention a little bit about Harper Cruise too. I was finally able to have people over at my house finally done enough that I was able to invite friends over. And I had people there from Gross Point Woods, Ortonville, Dearborn Heights, Redford, Detroit, a lot of communities. And the overwhelming comment from all of them was that they, they couldn't believe this was happening. That they, they couldn't imagine this in their communities and, and they were just so impressed. I'd been telling them for years to come. They wouldn't come. So I, this time, you know, offering free hamburgers and hot dogs, which, you know, probably got Shorewood a bunch more donations because you got some, definitely some out of town people who were very impressed and donated. And just a, a great event. I didn't get much to cruise very much. I got about a mile out of it because I had to be host, but they enjoyed that stretch of it. So I did want to mention one other thing. I know that for a while, the Shores Inn, or sorry, not Shores Inn, Shores Theater was red-tagged. I seen some hand-scrolled signs on there the other day. I saw work going on today. Is, is that still tagged? Is, can I maybe get an update on the legal status of what's going on over there? And is it going to open up without a C of O just because?
I don't think so. But she'll get you the, we can get you that legal status and possibility of some, I think he's. and possibility of some, um, I think he's, he's been working with the S B A, and there may have been some movement there, movements there, so.
Okay, and it'd be great to see it get finished.
From Ms. Pike when she gets back. She is on vacation this week. I mean, Dustin maybe get all that, I don't know if you have all the S B A information, it might have to be next week when Ms. Pike gets back here, but, uh, we're, we're hoping there's still progress there with the S B A.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, item eleven, the city manager's report. Mr. Lent, do you have anything?
Yes, uh, so just give a little bit of an update on priority waste. Um, as council has known, I did send out an email, uh, later this afternoon, um, but I do want to highlight for the residents, uh, some updates, uh, from our last couple of meetings that administration has had with priority, and then to also update, uh, some council. Uh, so the new trucks, uh, have came into our area. Uh, we, we have thirteen vehicles that operate our municipality. Uh, we have received seven upgraded vehicles, one of those being new. Uh, five of the six upgraded vehicles are twenty twenty-four model year, and the other is a twenty twenty-two model year. Um, one of the reasons that we didn't get the brand, brand-new ones is a large, large percentage of those are the side load, uh, which are strictly for carded services, uh, but not completely ideal for St. Clair Shores, because we do allow, um, loose trash to still be dedicated out. Um, so that's one of the good highlights, and I will say, we have seen, just in the last few weeks, uh, the calls for complaints have slowly started to diminish. Um, we also do have a dedicated phone line now, um, for St. Clair Shores. Um, and then the other thing that I know that council, uh, specifically asked for was a route supervisor. Um, priority has implemented an employee to temporarily, right now, review the services at its, because as it is completed each day in St. Clair Shores. This individual is being utilized to report directly to the executive leadership issues that are occurring in the city in an effort to drive down misstops and address the small issues immediately and the larger issues more proactively. This feedback is, feedback is given each night to their C E O and the general manager who oversees the crew and the city and their V P., um, for priority. Um, they also, for the phone call handling, um, they wanted to make sure that it was mentioned in the meeting, that it's interpreted, that priority only has four customer service representatives to clarify, uh, they have four receptionists, and then they also have individuals that work for each one of the communities. St. Clair Shores has a dedicated logistic driver coordinator that takes all the calls, takes calls from residents, and four additional members that handle just St. Clair Shores, um, and those are the L D Cs that we receive emails. Um, so we are heavily working, uh, with priority, trying to administer as much as we can to continue to try to get better service. It is not perfect, this is an email, uh, like I said, that we received today. This was distributed, it's a lot longer than that for all council to read, but I do want to let, uh, residents know that administration and council is working with priority in trying to remedy as many of these issues as we can, as well as we do have a committee that is put together that is, uh, getting ready to work on the bid specs for a new bid, and also looking at other options, uh, to be able to potentially, if it's, you know, feasible for, uh, any other alternatives.
Correct. Mr. Karen.
So I, I realize we just got this today, and you probably haven't had a chance to clarify anything on Mr. Vanette, but the temporary person to make sure that things are actually running around, is that basically a route supervisor? Someone that'll actually be in the field?
That is correct.
Driving behind the trucks?
Yep.
Hmm. I wonder who's, who, I think we told them to do that before, right?
Right.
Right, and they've kept refusing, they want to use a little, it's a Vitali reference, their little Skynet system, and, okay.
Let's just hope, let's just hope it, it, it's, gets improved.
Just had to throw that in there.
Okay, we're just trying to get improvement here, and we, we see a little improvement, we just hope.
Thank you, Dustin, I, I've seen some improvement.
So let's just hope we, it's a little early, so we'll hopefully it keeps going. Anything else, Mr. Lent?
That is it.
Uh, do we have anyone for audience participation, you have a five-minute time limit to speak? Anyone? Nope? Okay, we'll just go to Mayor's comment. Two, two, uh, two comments. Uh, one, just to, uh, reiterate, uh, how great the Shorewood Kuanis and what they do in the community, just not at the Harper Cruise, but everywhere else, and how they've been such a great part of this community for decades. So it's just a wonderful organization, and thank them for all the efforts that, uh, they put in making St. Clair Shores a better community, and it, it is a great night. And then second, we're getting closer here to, um, and we'll be getting an email out to council regarding the seventy-fifth, you know, anniversary. We're gonna, our first kickoff, our first event, as we talked about, was gonna be in January seventeenth, which is the closest day to the seventy-fifth year St. Clair Shores has been, uh, a chartered city. It's actually, actually was January fifteenth, but that's a Thursday, so we're doing it on the seventeenth. Uh, we do have a little commercial that we're gonna start to kind of run, so I thought I'd show you that.
Hey, St. Clair Shores. Hey, St. Clair Shores. The city is turning seventy-five next year, and we want you to be part of the celebration. The communications department is collecting memories from residents to help celebrate this special milestone. If you have any interesting photos taken in the shores, email them to mcbanee at S C S M I dot net, or drop them off in person at the senior center front office. Be sure to include your name, the names of anyone in the photo, and the location and date of the photo. And if you have an interesting story about growing up in St. Clair Shores, we'd love to hear it. Submissions may be used in city promotional materials. Let's celebrate seventy-five years of St. Clair Shores, together.
So again, we're, we're gonna start kicking this off here in, in September. One of the best parts of this is that, uh, many of the pictures of these, these organizations with the Goodfellows, the Hockey Association, the parade you see, I mean, are still, you know, um, part of the community, and they're the fabric of our community, and they have